This is Tuesday. May twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, meeting in the town of Berlin Planning Board. As preliminary matter, please note this meeting is being recorded and that some of the attendees are participating by video conference. Permit, this is Tom Sanford, Chair of the Planning Board, permit me to confirm that all members of the board. Are present and can hear me prior to me calling the meeting to order, Planning Board members, when I call your name, please respond in an affirmative. Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew. And Thomas Andrew.
I am here, yes.
Excellent. And Thomas Sanford here. With the Quorum of the Board President, I call this meeting to order at seven thirty six P M Tuesday, twenty twenty five. This is an open meeting of the Planning Board being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, twenty twenty due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. With specific information and general guidelines for the remote participation by members of the public, which can be found on the town of Berlin website. The governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly physical accessible location. And allows and encourages us to participate remotely. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening using the Zoom platform as posted on the agenda, which includes links for the public to join this meeting. I'll introduce each speaker on the agenda after they are concluding remarks, I'll invite board members by my name to provide any comments, questions, or penetrating insights and or motions. Please hold all your insight to your insights till your names are called. Board members and speakers, please remember to mute your phone or computer when not speaking. Speak clearly to ensure that accurate minutes are recorded. And for any response, please wait until you yielded the floor and state your name before speaking. If board members wish to engage in conversation with one another, please do so through me to avoid multiple conversations happening at the same time. Lastly, please note that each vote in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Thank you all for your understanding and cooperation. Excellent. So do we have any administrative matters that we need to take care of? At this point?
Well, we could. I I did send around probably around five o'clock after I finished my last call. The proposed note to the Z B A on Jerry Burns. Thing, can you check that on your email and maybe we could say? That's okay, and we can send it.
I did see that, let me see, hold on one second.
Yep.
You see if I can pull this up. But it basically said what we had talked about in our meeting, right, Thomas?
Oh, well, that. That was my aim, yes, I just wanted to confirm that. Because actually, when I got Jay's notes, they weren't quite as detailed as I thought.
Right, yeah, so you listed the categories and, yep. Yep.
Because my under- my understanding was that they wanted more than just the vote from that email from. From Jay, and so, yeah. Okay. All right, and I don't think we need to take a vote or anything on it because it's just, you know, memorandum of what we talked about, but. I will. I'll forward that to the Z B A.
Okay.
Awesome. So I'm just looking at the agenda, I thought.
Before we get to that, can we have a motion to accept the minutes of last meeting?
I make motion to accept the minutes of the last meeting.
Can you second that, Thomas?
Yes, sorry, I was having. Okay, I I just had a slight flicker of the. Wifi here, so everything froze, but now I'm back on and I would say aye.
Okay, you've seconded it, so any.
Second, sorry, second, sorry.
Any corrections or any just further discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask you to vote Carolyn McDonald.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Thought there was something. That Jay wanted us to discuss. Maybe not, though.
No, seven forty five is a preliminary subdivision.
Right. I will go to my town government and pull up those plans. I'm ready when you are, and we do have Greg Roy in the audience, so. Think technically, we still have one more minute.
We have one more minute, yeah, exactly, let's just wait one more minute if we don't mind.
Right, I think we are there.
Now we're there.
All right. I will promote Greg.
Good evening.
Hello, how are you?
Very good, how are you?
Excellent.
I am ready when you are, you you ready for me to give you a quick spiel here, or do you need to?
Nope.
Read it. Okay.
You're all set. Your floor is yours.
Okay, thanks, I'll try to be, I'll try to be brief, my name is Greg Roy with Dillison Roy. And I'm representing the applicants this evening, Ed and Suzanne Cunningham at twenty Turner Road. And I appreciate the opportunity to to present this project to you. We have prepared and submitted a preliminary subdivision for your consideration this evening. The applicants, as I said, they live at twenty Turner Road. It's at the terminus of Turner Road, and it's approximately a five point eight, five point seven eight acre piece of land. The existing dwelling on the house. Excuse me, the existing dwelling on the property, it's been a long day already. Exists sort of in the center. You know, immediately as you turn a road, sort of just comes right onto the property and turns into converts from road right into driveway. Where you access their house. As such, there's not a lot of frontage, really, the only frontage that exists is the very. End of Turner Road, if you will, approximately a thirty or forty foot. Width of that road functions as the frontage for that. Thank you very much, this is helpful. Appreciate it, should have asked first.
No worries.
And essentially why we're here, the Cunninghams approached us. Last year about seeing if there was any potential to subdivide the property. And as I mentioned, the. There's already insufficient frontage so that the lots in essentially a preexisting nonconforming lot relative to frontage. As it really only has about, I can't remember the exact number, but it's thirty or forty feet, well short of your two of your two hundred foot requirement. However, it does have sufficient area, it has the five point seven eight acres. And and. And in fact, has enough area to create a second lot on the property. And they are interested in exploring the potential of creating a second lot for family members. They have a son, I think, that was recently married. Or a child that was recently married, I can't remember if it was the son or the daughter. And they're interested in in trying to find a way that they can create some additional lot for that family member to construct the house. And so, as we were working with them, really, the only way to do that, we felt was was to petition your board for the creation of a subdivision. Which is why we're here today. So what we're proposing is essentially creating a cul-de-sac. Right away circle, right at the end of Turner Road. So as I, as I mentioned, Turner Road currently dead ends right into the property. There are turnarounds, but they are on the Cunninghams property. So there's no. Publicly accessible turnaround for that street. And so we thought that there might be an opportunity here to improve a current situation by creating a cul-de-sac circle, right away circle. That would do really do two things, it would first give the Cunninghams enough frontage for your bylaw. To create the two lots, one would be for the existing house and the other would be for a proposed house. But then what we would we would propose is to improve. Essentially extend Turner Road, the Turner Road pavement into that cul-de-sac circle. And create a more formalized turnaround that could be used for emergency service vehicles or for snowplows and. And other other larger vehicles that would have difficulty turning around. So. And essentially, that's the proposal. We did ask you through this process to consider a few waivers. And essentially, what we're asking you to do. Or to consider anyway, is to. Is to waive the requirements for the creation of a more conventional cul-de-sac paved circle, if you will. And and there's a, there's a bunch of other smaller waivers that go along with that, but the the major one that we're asking is for you to consider. Really just keeping this the look and feel of a single family driveway would essentially turn into a shared driveway, we'd have two driveways coming off that. That terminus point. But we're, we're asking for that, and then there's a few other smaller ones. Well, I guess the other, the other more significant one is that the currently the length of road dead end street for Turner Road is is approximately four hundred feet, excuse me, four hundred fifty feet from Derby. Adding the cul-de-sac bulb on the end, the. Hundred foot radius circle would effectively lengthen that road to just over your five hundred foot max dead end standard, so. That, that's another one that we're asking for. That would, we'd be creating a dead end street that's slightly longer than you allowed in virtue of the fact that we'd be, you know, having to extend the pavement to create the turnaround. And then the others, I can go through these, but the others are things that we would kind of, we would commonly ask for, but certainly on this, on this type of project, we're really trying to keep the look and feel of a. You know, essentially a single family residential driveway. We're asking you to waive things like curb and gutter installation and sidewalks and and street trees and things like that, that you'd normally see on a more. Well-defined, public street. I think that's what I wanted to cover, Mr. Chair, if there's any other, and I'm certainly happy to take any questions or comments from from your board. And I'll answer them to the best of my ability.
So is the intent to create this circle? The base of the circle, in other words, if this was a road that was going to be put forth to the town at some point in time to accept as a legal way? Is it going to be built to road standards? I know you're not going to pave it, but is all the base and all the grading and. So water. Management all going to be there?
Certainly, yes, we would be paving it, we, as you mentioned, we are asking you for sort of, I'll I'll call it horizontal waivers, if you will, so not to build the full, you know. Formalized cul-de-sac paved circle. But we would certainly propose to pave it with the same cross section that you require pavement pavement and gravel cross section. We would be doing, you know, stormwater during the definitive portion. It would be pretty minor because we're not proposing a lot of, a lot of pavement there, but we would certainly be looking, not asking you for waivers relative to that those type of metrics.
Right. But you keep, you say pavement, but you're not planning on paving the circle, you're just planning on paving the drive portion.
Yeah, so if you can, you can see on this plan here that the gray scale.
Yeah, the circle part of it will have the the base and everything there. So if it was ever approached to the town, it could be paved and.
Oh, we could certainly do that, we could certainly, yeah. So the other thing to say here is, we're asking you for the waivers, but, you know, your your board certainly has authority to say, you know, some, to tell us.
I'm just trying to get an understanding if if this, you know, because. Well, I'm trying to look down the road in the future, and if something happens and they decide to sell this either as an individual lot or as the both of them, a pair of them to. Somebody else and they say to us, well, this is a legal way, we want the town to accept it, the town needs to be in a position to be able to accept it as a legal way.
Yeah, well, that that's true, so. We. I've I've sort of dealt with that issue in a lot of different ways in different communities. Sometimes when we've done these type of things, the the board is very clear, and we wouldn't be asking you to do that tonight, we have a whole definitive stage. But sometimes planning boards will will put perpetual conditions relative to the fact that it's to remain a private way unless. You know, it's brought up to current, you know, street standards. You know, if they're granting waivers. Other times, boards ask us to, you know, are adamant about certain things such as. Constructing the gravel, you know, circle in the event that it would be needed, I mean, it's certainly something we could, we could look to do and then just, you know. Grass over that until such time as it needed to be used and then it could be.
Right, we'd be interested in for, you know, fired apartment vehicles and things like that for being able to go off of the, you know, whatever you're proposing for pavement for a turnaround. And not sink out of sight, it's, you know, if the anticipation is is a circle there, then, you know, obviously, they're going to just drive wherever they want to.
Yeah, but. This does have to be accepted as a public way in order to create the appropriate frontage.
Not, not necessarily, it could remain, it could remain private. It it, but we could grant, obviously, the idea here is to make sure that the town has rights to the to the road, so I think that. You know, in the spirit of trying to. Make the situation better for the town, I think we would envision it to be, you know, more or less a public, a public way here, but. You raise an interesting point. You know. I guess we would have to think through that more, but I mean, we, it is possible to drive frontage from a private, from a private way, a way that remains private, we would just have to think through. Making sure that the town has rights to use that.
I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure that that's accommodated under our zoning bylaw.
You have to have, you have to drive frontage from a way that is a public way.
Yeah, that's what I think.
Okay, I'd have to look at your, I'd have to look at your zoning.
Yeah, I have to look at it myself, given the question coming up, but. I think that that's something we need to address as we go forward.
Excuse me, I have trouble speaking. Private privately owned subdivision roads are becoming much more common nowadays because a lot of towns are. Are balking at modern day stormwater requirements, so. The, the roads are designed to subdivision standards and all the modern day stormwater. Things that that go along with Massachusetts stormwater protection, and then the Department of. Public Works says, well, we don't have budget to maintain that, so. We in a lot of, in a lot of towns are actually doing even much larger subdivisions as privately owned roads that are not to ever be conveyed, you know, not to ever be. Accepted by the town. But your bylaw may have something in it, I'd have to look at.
Yeah, I need to, I need to look at that, Tom Sanford, do you? Have any insight into that?
No, Thomas, I wasn't thinking on, you bring up a good point, though, you know, does the. Creation of a lot, the allow allowance of a lot, is it derived from having frontage on a public way? And if that's the case, then that that's one issue, the issue I was bringing up was. We've had a situation, and this was probably fifteen years ago, maybe longer, where we had put in a, there was, we accepted a subdivision. And the idea was it was never going to be, it was always going to be a private way, it was never going to be a public way. And we gave waivers on the property for width and for length and for the turnaround, similar to this, there was a few more lots on this. The person that was developing the land, he went out of business after the first house was built, he won, or he or whoever he, his creditors were. Sold the property. It was finished by another developer and then they approached the town to accept the road. After the fact, and it was not. Up to the standards, and they were trying to shove it down the town's throat. That we agreed that when we created the subdivision that we'd accepted at some point in time, and that wasn't the case. And so there was a lot of people that were, had a little bit of angst about what was said and what wasn't said and what was assumed and what wasn't assumed. What was in writing was what we ultimately went with and they, it still remained a private way.
I was gonna bring up that property. Because that's the only one that I know of. Especially off the top of my head that uses. A private way for frontage.
Correct.
But what I thought I heard. From your description, Tom, was that the assumption was that they would create it and it would eventually be accepted. And we granted the subdivision on the idea that it would eventually be a public way.
Correct, so what we did, Thomas, was we had them build the base, all of the stormwater management, everything was done as it would have been a road. An accepted way, accepted public way. We granted them relief on the pavement. And the size of the turnaround at the end and what they will, you know, what they had to do with the snow removal and what have you. But what they did was is they said, okay, you granted us these waivers, but you have to accept it as a way, and we said, no, it's not, it's not considered. You know, it's not up to standards, you need to, you've got the base and all that, but you need to put all of the, you have to finish it, you, it's like, it's like a partially. You know, it's like a roughed in road, and so as far as we're concerned, it's not a legal way. That the town can accept, and there was a lot.
But the lots are already done and the houses were already built, right?
Exactly, yes, they were.
So. And again, I think. That. Greg, what we need to look at is we we don't want to go down that route again.
Absolutely, yeah.
And that. What this discussion tells me is that that was done as is normally the case. That before a road is built, the assumption is it's going, you know, subdivision road is going to be a public way and we calculate the. We calculate the frontages and so on in accordance with that, so I think. I think we probably don't have the exception that you were talking about, Greg, and this has to be. Looked at as a public way, but we can look at that. Between now and the next meeting and and come back on that, okay?
Fair enough, yeah, absolutely, I have a note for that, thank you.
All right.
So I would like to see where the. Potential second driveway. Is proposed to be. And I would love to know your plans for the wetlands crossing.
We we could advance that a little, sure, we certainly need a, there's a wetland there.
Oh, indeed.
We.
And are you sure it's a wetland and not a perennial stream?
We actually, we are, it it is mapped perennial, but we did do the the documentation last, last year before it turned drought conditions. And that, that stream does dry up. So we can advance that for you. We didn't, we haven't gone down that path, we certainly will need an order of conditions for this, if if, well, we didn't want to put the car for horse, certainly, yeah.
Sure, yeah, yeah, just some rough idea.
Absolutely.
Nothing, not going to hold you to it.
No, absolutely, yep.
So you had mentioned before that. You know, you you you're planning on. Building this as a, as a public way and and. We're just, you're looking for relief from the, from the pavement and certain other things, which is fine, but then you also had mentioned that. You know, you're you're treating this like is a common drive, so. Is the intent to have a common drive, if this, right now, the property is being intended to be, you know. Familial, people are going to be relatives and everything else, but if something happens in the future. And this needs to be sold or a lot, one house needs to be sold. Is that going to create, are we creating a problem, in other words? What was the overall, what's the escape clause that we're going to have?
Great, great question. So this is always difficult to explain when we're doing these type of things, but essentially, we're proposing a subdivision road.
Right.
We're just essentially asking you to waive the street construction standards down to what would otherwise be required for a shared or common driveway. So the legal arrangement would be, the legal arrangement would be, I'm getting a little echo here, sorry. The legal arrangement would be, would be what you'd expect for a sub, for a subdivision, whether or not it's a private road or a public road, we have to work that detail out, which we'll, we'll do more research on, but. We would. We would. Be looking to use the the access rights per the subdivision for that and not make a separate shared driveway agreement. But we're asking you, when I said shared driveway, effectively, we're essentially asking your board, the waivers that we requested are in the spirit of. Asking you to, for permission to only construct the the portion of the road to us to a more driveway-like standard.
Okay.
But there would be an easement on Lot One for access to Lot Two.
Well, the way we're showing it here would be, yeah, because we're, we have a little sliver there, yes.
A little, oh. Okay, yeah, there's a lot going on on this, I missed that.
Yeah, there's a little, but effectively, the access to Lot Two would be through its own frontage. So it wouldn't be, you know, the the right, the right away would be a right, a street right away, well, again, whether it's.
So it's this.
Yeah, that's the line.
Okay, so here, I see the property line here.
Small triangle.
Right, and then it goes like this.
Yeah.
And then it goes like this.
Right, so that.
And then where does it go from there?
Around the circle.
Oh, I see, then this lot goes here and that lot.
That's right, so he's got a small little triangle there that would be a, it would have to have an easement across it.
To to use the driveway in its current configuration, we could certainly, you know, we could certainly, you know. Re revise the way that driveway comes in to come through its frontage, but. That's the way, that's where the driveway exists today. And it's just the way the geometry works with, you know, with the right, drawing the right away and how the frontages work, why that little triangle exists.
Okay. One of the things I can also say in terms of. Granting any waivers for. You know, limited paving, et cetera. Would be that we would absolutely consult with emergency services and they would have a lot to say about whether. What was proposed would be sufficient for sort of access and turnaround for emergency vehicles. That's just something we can't answer tonight, but that is something that we would seek advice from uh. Emergency services on as we go forward.
Plus, we'll talk to highway too, because I don't know whether they, how they, what they do with the snow removal now for Turner Road. Um.
Yeah, that's a good point.
They may be looking for a, you know, a better solution. And if we can accommodate them, then that helps everybody.
Yeah. So I think those two points, when we, you know, really get down to it, into the weeds. In terms of what's paved and so on, uh, input from those. Two agencies are gonna be important.
I can um, make a commitment to reach out to them, uh, in between the next, you know, now and the next time we, we, we meet. If that's, would be acceptable to your board. Or if you'd like to do it, I'm happy to, but I, I'm happy to reach out.
Um, I don't see a problem with them contacting you. Do you, Thomas?
No, 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 not at all.
Okay, yeah, I think that would be fine.
Yeah, and, and we certainly understand that and uh, agree wholeheartedly. They'll, they'll have to ultimately sign off on this.
Yeah.
Uh, so, for sure.
And as we move forward, um, once we get to the point where you're providing us drainage calculations. And, you know, stormwater management and that type of plans, we will engage a consultant. So that needs to be, you know, upfront. We want to be upfront with you that, that, that's gonna be borne by the applicant.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Um, not to, you know, kind of be a bummer, but are we setting some sort of, any sort of precedent? That we're gonna be unhappy about setting in the future for allowing all of these. Um, I mean, we're talking about creating two non-conforming lots.
No, no, they'll be conforming.
They'd actually be, yeah, we'd actually make.
Yeah, they actually, sorry, I'm, yep, um. I'm just.
Varieties are really not creating, you know, the according to Hoyle turnaround. And my feeling is that if we set a precedent that we do that if it's approved by highway. And emergency services, that's a precedent I could live with. Just for myself.
I, we probably have to reflect on what we did with. Um. I'm thinking off of Randall Road, we had that two-house subdivision. And they. Uh, we, we probably should go back and review that one. And the standards that we asked them to meet.
Okay, I think that was during my fairly long hiatus on the board, but uh.
I mean, we, we, we did have that one. Now, we've also got. Um, one off of Ball Hill Road that never was put forward as a town way. But in that case, we asked them to. Um, provide a base that was, would be satisfactory for a, a, a legal subdivision road. They didn't have to pave it. But we asked that, I think we asked that the base be prepared in such a way. That it would meet the standards for a subdivision road.
Is that the one that we were talking about a few minutes ago, perhaps before Tim joined? No, a different one, okay.
Yep.
Um.
Yeah, that other one is down my end of town.
Yeah, that's right. There's one down your way too.
Yep.
Yeah, so I, I think we just need to review those and. See if there's a consistent pattern. I think there is. I mean, I think we can. We, we've been open to accommodation in the past. Um, particularly when the way wasn't gonna be accepted as a, or proposed as a public way. Was gonna remain a private way. Um, in this case, it's problematic because the roads are dead-ended and. We might, we might find, like you've been talking about, a way to improve the access by highway. As well as, as uh, public safety. So, you know.
I think we talked about this. I didn't notice when you joined, so we talked about this perhaps just before you joined. Um, frontage for purposes of our bylaw, isn't that on a public way? Not a private way?
Well, no, I mean, we did allow frontage on a private way. When it was, the subdivision road was constructed, like I said, the, the base was constructed. To meet the subdivision regulations and we just allowed them not to pave it. Um. But it still ended up being satisfactory to. Fire and highway. We gotta go back and look at those. Anyway.
Yeah, cause I, the question I had was, and I, it's been a while before I. Gotten down on some of these questions with planning board is whether our definition of frontage is on a public way or a private way. You, you follow me? And.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, when we talked about one instance before. We had allowed it because the understanding was it would be accepted as a public way. But then the town. Didn't accept it, but that, that doesn't tell me that the zoning bylaw. Doesn't require that the frontage be on a public way. So that's one thing I've got to look at.
Right.
Yeah, that's fair. We'll, we'll look at it too. Um, have.
Yeah.
A little bit more understanding around that point.
The other. Um, accommodation that you're asking for is the length. How much more than five hundred feet is this?
Seventy-five, five hundred seventy-five feet total.
Okay. Okay.
Hmm, so, so the plan you just showed us, the, the new, the new way is five hundred and seventy-five feet?
No, the, the whole thing to Turner Road is.
It would, it would be including, we, we kind of took a conservative.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying. You said Turner Road would be five hundred and seventy-five.
Yeah.
Okay.
I have to double check by the numbers that I'm throwing around. Perhaps, I think, because I think. That Turner Road was five, four hundred and fifty feet, maybe it's four seventy-five. Anyway. We're, we're fifty to seventy-five feet longer than your, your, we would be fifty to seventy-five feet longer if you were to accept that.
Yeah, and I, but, but what you're gonna do for us is make highway and public safety a lot happier. So we'll, we'd buy into the additional footage in order to get them in a better position. Yeah.
That's our, that's our hope that you would see it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was our, that was our goal in putting this forward was to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Make improvements, uh, you know, improve an existing situation.
Yeah.
If you will.
Yeah, so I think what we're coming down on is that um. The acceptance by emergency services and the highway that this does improve it. Is a key to all of it. And if they require modifications of what you're proposing on this plan. We need to accommodate those. And that seems to me to be the key that unlocks. This possibility.
That makes perfect sense. Very fair, yep.
Is that fair, other members of the board?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah. So just to make sure our ducks are in order here. Um, the plan was submitted when?
The early May, I think maybe the fifth of May, something like that.
And I'm trying to recall a preliminary plan.
That's a great question.
We got forty-five days?
Yeah, but we'll extend it.
So what we want from you, I guess, is some written acknowledgement that you're allowing us to extend that period. Just so we've got that on record and.
We will, we will put that in record.
Yeah, that'd be great. And then, then we're safe and we can continue to negotiate. Good.
I will definitely, we will definitely do that. No, no objections there. We appreciate your consideration.
And that's of course necessary because you're asking for these accommodations and it's gonna take us a while for you and us to sort those out.
Yeah, they, they probably wouldn't boo the applicant to force you to vote on this.
Because, yeah, because if we had to vote on, you know, compliance with the bylaw right now, that would be a short conversation, right?
Yeah, not, not productive. Yeah, no, no problems. We'll, we'll, we'll extend that in writing.
Great, thanks.
Awesome. All right, um, Mr. Sanford, I texted him. He all of a sudden went away. I guess he got kicked out of Zoom and he's having trouble logging back in.
Why'd you kick him out?
I didn't. He, I super didn't.
It happened right about the time you popped on, Tim.
Yeah. And I was listening for a while.
I know, I know.
Yeah, I was trying to keep an eye out, but I was screen sharing also, so I.
Carolyn didn't know I was there and I got to just listen and not have to say anything, so.
Right?
Well, folks, I have a list and um, I, I would um, be happy to extend this uh, a few weeks or a month. Whatever you think needs to be the case and um, you know, give us time to get, get the information that you've asked for, reach out to the fire, police, TPW. Um, I'd suggest that's probably, if we extended two weeks, uh, that's probably not enough time. So I would suggest we extend it a month if that's, if that's acceptable to you folks and.
I think that's probably fair enough. We only meet once a month in July and August, but uh.
Okay, well.
There will be two in June though.
Second in Ju, yeah.
Yeah, there'll be two in June, yeah. And one in, in, in early July, so. I would just, I guess I'd like the extension to cover through our meeting in July.
Okay.
Just, just to be sure that. We can cover this.
Absolutely. So you're, you're gonna do the, uh, would it be the, um, it'll be the second Tuesday, uh, second Tuesday in July is what.
Yeah, so July eighth.
Okay, I'll make sure I have that in there.
Okay, that, that's good, because that should give us, that gives us three meetings to deal with this as opposed to two, so.
Great, all right, thanks.
Well, thank you. We appreciate it. So we, so I, I guess we'd be on this, I don't have my June calendar up, but.
Oh, um, June, so two weeks is June tenth, four weeks is June twenty-fourth.
Okay, twenty-fourth would be good for us.
Yeah, and I think we can accommodate that. And if you extend it through the eighth, it gives us that much more time. If there are last minute issues and so on, because obviously if we have issues outstanding, we're just gonna vote not to do it.
Yep, no, understood. Loud and clear. We'll get to that, uh, tomorrow.
Okay.
All right, and in, uh, in your email, if you could just let Jay know that you want to be on the June twenty-fourth.
Yeah.
Agenda.
Yeah.
Um, since he is the agenda keeper.
Will do.
All right.
Thank you.
Awesome. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate your time this evening. We'll see you in a month.
Have a good evening.
Good night. All right, Mr. Wheeler, do you want to take over chairing since our chair? Seems to still be having difficulties.
Sure, what do we got at eight fifteen for?
Eight fifteen for River Bridge Lot nine D and E informal discussion.
So. Um, let's promote Chris and.
Your son.
He'll tell us who else he's got. I think he's.
Uh, so Ifron is also on the agenda.
Okay, good.
So, well, yep, there goes his hand.
Hi, Chris.
Oh.
Hi, Chris.
Hi, Tim. Hi, Carolyn. Hi, Tom.
Hello.
Good to see you all. I think we're being joined by the person who we've signed a contract with.
Ifron.
Here, here from vague, and we might be joined by his architect as well.
Looks like DZI.
DZI isn't his architect.
DZI, that's right.
All right, well, welcome everyone. And um, Chris, did you wanna introduce the topic?
Sure, sure. Thanks for having us on your agenda. Um, as you know, we listed our property that's available, the, the large lot in front of the apartments. Um, with a new broker at the beginning of the year. And that broker did a good job of bringing a couple of parties uh, to us. Who had real interest in, in building something, uh, non-residential. Uh, on lots nine D and E. Uh, nine D is the larger of the two lots and has the old liquor store on it. And lot nine E has the, the single story white building that's a residential building in front of the daycare center. And. You may recall that a company called Choice Hotels was interested. Uh, and they made a, a very good offer to buy those two parcels from us. And, but we wound up choosing earphone bag's proposal. We felt it was a bit more in keeping with the original planning for uh, these two lots. And um, we have really enjoyed getting to know Earfin, who is here, um, and also his uh, engineering firm. Uh, this is Ahmad uh, from DZI. And so I'll just turn it over to them. Um, earphone, from where I'm sitting, it looks like you're upside down.
I'm glad you said that, Chris.
Trying to figure that out since while you were speaking.
How that's.
I don't know how that, and this is the first time it happened to me, white upside down.
Are you, uh, are you calling from Australia by any chance?
That would explain.
I'm, I'm very close to Berlin. I live, I live in this wonderful town called Wesboro.
Oh, there you go.
That explains it, yeah.
Uh, I don't, I'm trying to figure that out, but I don't want to waste everyone's time here. So, uh, like Chris introduced me, my name is Irfan Beg and I have uh, uh, Imad Zareen with me. He's our civil engineer. Uh, first of all, I would like to thank each one of you, the planning board members and the planning board. Um, the Berlin Planning Board for giving me opportunity to speak here. And thank you, Chris and Matt, for introducing me to the River Beach community. Um, I'm very excited about it. And today I'm here to talk preliminary, you know, vision that I have about this property. So if I can share, you know, uh, if that's okay, I can share a couple of slides that we can go through. Is that okay with everyone?
Yeah, hopefully they're not upside down.
Well, we will know soon.
Oh, good.
Is it?
Good.
No, it's not. It's right setup.
Yeah, all right. Let me minimize some of these windows here. I go in presentation mode. No. My presentation mode is disabled. Okay, so basically the idea is it's a, it's a mixed-use development, you know. Um, are going to be, you know, which is in alignment with village overlay district goals. Um, uh, we'll have two buildings, um, which will house retail, restaurants. Mini supermarket and a community prayer space. Uh, each of this building is building one, it's roughly about fifteen thousand. Let me correct that, fifteen thousand square foot. And building two, the initial idea is to have two stories, you know, with eight thousand square foot each. Uh, and then definitely the idea is to enhance community engagement. What I mean by that is, you know, so people can engage, interact, socialize, you know, which, which is helpful. Um, and then walkability, you know, the pedestrian can walk from one building to another building. So there will be accessibility to that. And then the visual appeal as well, you know, the landscaping and the aesthetic to the uh, property. Will be uh, taken care as well. Um, a good parking layout, you know, uh, which I will show in my next slide. You know, it carefully laid out with roughly about two fifty parking. uh, roughly about 250 parking spots. Uh, any question on this before I move on to the site plan?
Nope.
So yeah, this is a big picture that everyone can see, hopefully. All right, let me blow it up. Here we go. Um, let me zoom out. So, so we are here, this is the rotary. So we have one entrance from the rotary, rotary here and the another one uh, at the middle, right at the middle of the uh, two properties. Lot 9D and Lot 9E, this is the proposed uh, billing. The big one, 15,000 square foot, one, one story building and this is the small billing with two stories, you know, 8,000 square foot each. Um, the accessibility, like I mentioned, two access and then I think there is also another access around the daycare. Any questions so far? I think, I believe, um, Chris, you shared this site plan with someone with the board yet? Not yet?
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
Um, and there were some comments on it, but, but just informal comments, I think mostly uh, the current parking plan uh, lacks some landscaping and some, and some shade trees and so forth. And there are certain standards in the bylaws, um, that the planning board will probably be looking at to make sure it's laid out in a way that's consistent with the rest of River Bridge and, and pleasing to to drivers who, who drive right by the facility. Um, so there could be some, some input on that.
Yeah, sure. No, definitely, you know, we will definitely put the landscaping part here. We can add trees, you know, as needed to make it more green and pleasing and welcoming to the community. Um, going back to my slides, you know, pretty much the next step, like it's an early stage concept, you know, it's still in, nothing is finalized, you know, this is a preliminary idea which we will which will be start working on, you know, we have engaged the engineers and architects moving forward, um, very fast here. And um, and then the next step would be to finalize the site plan and, you know, submit it to the board for review. And obviously, you know, over the next few months, you know, we will do the detailed architecture plan and elevations.
Okay. So may, may I ask, is there anything in this concept plan that would require a variance or an accommodation from the existing overlay bylaw provisions?
Um, I'm, don't think so.
I can speak to that. This is the amount of rain from the river's terrain. I, I think we, I don't think we would require any variances. We pretty much looked at the, the approved plan that's currently approved for the, for those two lots. And we try, we try to somehow mimic, mimic that, that design, you know, with our own vision, obviously. So setbacks and parking spaces, uh, sizes and driveway sizes and all that, we, we pretty much.
Those are all conforming.
Conforming to, to the, to the approved plan, yes.
Okay, okay, um, because I would just say that if there is anything that requires a variance or modification, it's very important that we identify those things early in the process, which is not to say they can't be addressed, but they need to be addressed early on. And if it does, if it is consistent with all of the uh, the zoning provisions that, that certainly simplifies the situation for us.
Sure does.
So.
I'd like to speak a little bit about the landscaping. I think to you know, to the expense of losing few parking spaces, we could probably uh, looking at the site plan, you know, along, along those long rows will insert every 10, 10, 15 parking spaces will insert that, uh, you know, planting bed, uh, you know, take a space out, put a, put a nice.
Yep, and as you adjust the you know, to, you know, again, as you adjust the, the plan with respect to those concerns.
Yes.
If there's a variance or something, if you, you know, if you fall 10% short on parking in order to do that. Again, those are the sorts of things that uh, if we address early, as soon as they arise, it's best for everybody.
Yeah, we'll look at that, yeah, we'll look at that.
So you've got one building with 15,000 square feet and the other with two floors of eight each, so 16, so you're 31,000 square feet total?
Yeah, that sounds.
And, and just remind us of what that would dictate in terms of your, your parking requirement. Is it 216 or, or is it a number shorter than that? Do you recall?
The, the parking that we know we have was 258, right?
So you got 258 parking spaces?
Like 250.
You're, you're muted, there you go.
I own 250, yeah, we're all 250.
So was, was that driven by the, the bylaw requirement or was that driven by your sense of what you needed to accommodate the uses?
Yeah. The latter, the latter.
And one of your bullets um, pleased me a lot because it talked about walkability and, and you know, sort of access between structures and, you know, I begin to think about not only access between the two structures you're creating, but the cafe, package store and, and also, um, the whole notion that we've got 210 apartments that adjoin the parcel and in the layout that you propose, it, I didn't see accommodation for, for ease, easy walkability between structures. It seemed like we're basically maxed out in terms of the 250 plus parking spaces and um, if I was trying to walk between the buildings, I'd have to cross um, essentially parking lots. So talk to me about that.
I understood. I mean, this, you know, this layout you're looking at is a kind of a, you know, shotgun kind of a layout. We wanted to see you know, what's the maximum we could get and then we're going to work backward from there. Start looking at the walkability, you know, we need to add handicap parking spaces, uh, some crosswalks. So definitely we, we, we'll lose some parking spaces. I think we're, the spaces are more than, more than what, what the code requires much more. So that's the next step, where we're looking at as the next.
And then my, my next question is that the, the secondary access, not from the rotary, but from the
The middle.
The middle part, so when you act, if, if that's access that leads into the apartments as well as into your site.
Yes.
Um, all the parking that aligns that is going to back out into that flow of traffic, the way I interpret your plan. And, and I guess I'd like, and I know this is, this is going to screw up your parking, um, but it, I just don't know if I buy into the notion of people parking, heading in and then backing out into that. It's a private way, but it's still a way that's now, if, if I look at it, it's suggested that that's already the, the, the way in which things play out on the apartment side anyway, so uh, I, maybe I shouldn't worry about it.
I mean, it's not different than, than the, the, the two parking rows that there are at the, at the apartment.
Apartments, right, yeah, I'm seeing that. So I, I mean, I wonder about it, but you know, part of me says is, was that a good idea back when we approved that one? But anyway. Um, good, all right. I mean, this is a little different than the apartments because this is a retail establishment that's got theoretically more traffic coming in and out of it than the apartments would, but uh.
Well, there'll be other access points as well.
Yeah. And then.
Different times, at different times, they have different peaks.
Yeah, and then tell us a little bit about the the uses that you're proposing. Can you flesh that um, out a little more?
Yeah, I mean, mostly, you know, it's going to be uh, small size restaurants roughly about uh, 1,500 to 2,000 square foot each. Um, and then some retail space uh, in the, in the first building, the, 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 the big building, 15,000 square foot. Um, and the second building would be uh, like a mini supermarket slash a community prayer space. In, on each floor, depending on, you know, where, which one goes. And then the idea is also, you know, this is still I'm debating, you know, I need to finalize on this, you know, uh, that you know, we will have a banquet hall or not over there.
Banquet hall in the two-story.
In the two-story, yeah. So either banquet hall on mini supermarket and a prayer, community hall, prayer space, so.
And the bank, the banquet hall would be a public accommodation?
Yes, public accommodation.
Okay, okay.
So that's venue for what weddings and things like that?
Weddings, you know, all the party, party halls.
And, and so restaurant wise, um, they're, they're all, so you're put, you're talking about what, two or three different, well, you've got 16, 15, what, 16?
15,000.
15,000. And you're talking about 1,000 to 1,500 square feet per unit?
15, 1,500 to 2,000, so minimum is 1,500.
So there may very well be half a dozen separate uses in that.
Sure.
Okay.
Yes.
Um.
So the idea there is mostly on the catering side, pick up, you know, with, with a small amount of seating arrangement, like roughly 20 to 25 seats per restaurants. Um, and then, you know, people will come, pick up their orders and then go. Um, it's less of a seating than more of a, you know, walking and then, you know, picking up uh, the food.
Good, good, thanks.
Well, I do, I do have to say this is much more in line with the initial vision for the use of the property than other things that have come before us.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Um.
No, it seems like a series of uses that townspeople would find beneficial.
Yep.
The other thing I noticed about the this initial site plan is that if you think back to the one that's been approved already, the hypothetical site plan, which was much more square footage, it was 42,000 square feet. There was um, a lot of buildings right along the street with the parking hidden behind it from River Road West and uh, Irfan and Ahmad have laid out certainly the eighth, the, the smaller building, a lot 9E is laid out exactly that way, where the building is along the street and the parking is in the back. Uh, with the larger building, it's hard to fit a 15,000 square foot building if you don't put it right in the middle. But a good uh, percentage of the parking is behind that building.
Mm-hmm.
And that is consistent with um, with what we had originally site planned.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, it's pragmatically appropriate to the uses that you're suggesting as well.
Yeah. Um, one of the reasons we chose this proposal over the hotel is because of earphones experience with this type of facility. Your fan, can you give the board a little bit of background on what you've accomplished over in Westboro and and how you're going to bring that, that knowledge here?
Yeah, so um, Westboro, I started a venue hall, you know, and um, the idea there was, you know, the hotels seems to be very expensive. So this was a good market, you know, for having a, a cost effective, you know, solution for uh, venues and for parties and all. So uh, it was an instant hit, you know, when I started, but it took a lot of my time. So, and now I understand the details of all this, you know, how it needs to be run. Um, it brought a lot of traffic to, you know, to Westboro, you know, and people not just come for uh, you know, venue. They come for ice cream social nearby or, you know, gas station to fill the gas or whatever it, whatever it may be, right? So it's been, it brought a lot of revenue to the Westboro town as well. So taking that concept and expanding it even more, you know, not just the banquet hall, but also restaurants and all, you know, uh, this is what I learned over time that people you know, want small scale restaurants, you know, so that, you know, they do more of the catering business and a, and a small space for uh, uh, carryout. So I thought, you know, this, the location was good and, you know, since I have a good background about the banquet hall and the restaurant, so it aptly fit into my vision.
I don't know if you know where the um, Westboro Tennis Club is on Oak Street. Uh, your friends' business was the next building uh, to the north.
Can you guys, uh, can you guys send us a link to the address because I might like to drive by and see it?
Sure.
Okay.
Who, who am I sending to?
Um.
You can send it to the planning board. Planningboard@townofberlin.com.
Yeah, sure.
That's great, thank you.
No, welcome. No, I think this is a good first start. I, I I guess I'd like to see the walkability component added to the next uh, rendition and play that out a little bit. It seems as though that if, if if, I mean, you know, are we encouraging people to, to sit outside and, and uh, and eat something they picked up at one of these venues or is that going to be discouraged? You know, that, that's what I'm looking for.
Yeah. No, no, and there's things, you know, as they were talking about a venue to have an outside area attached to the venue. I mean, that, you know, things that would make it more attractive, I think. The um, and as what I said before, I think the members would agree, you've pitched a very high number for parking spaces. We have a minimum under the zoning bylaw. But if by reducing parking spaces, one conserve the commercial thing and make it more attractive, have more green space and more walking space, that would, I think, be viewed positively by all of us.
Yeah, we'll look at that.
Yeah.
What, can I just ask what you, and hypothetically, I know that this is still a possibility, but what size um, banquet facility are you thinking, like a hundred people, 500 people?
Yeah, that, it's a good question. So what I've seen is typically, you know, um, most of my clients are, you know, Indian, Asian based client, so they have large weddings. So, so I definitely need a banquet hall which can, one hall which can accommodate roughly about 250.
Okay.
So in, in the current Westboro facility, I have two halls, one accommodates about 150 to 200 and the other one accommodates about 100. And we have two types of clients, you know, for small parties, you know, the 100 is very busy. And for big parties, you know, I lose some of the clients because, you know, I don't have enough space for big parties. You know, so, so what we are looking at is roughly about 400 capacity in total.
Sorry, 400 at a given event, is that what you're saying?
Right, if there are two events happening at the same time, you know, both the halls are busy, then we're talking about maximum 400.
Gotcha. So it's not just one hall, it's two halls and you're talking about 400 capacity total, okay?
Three, 300 plus 100, so.
Yeah, okay. Okay, well, you know, I think, yeah. That makes for some interesting math between the things that we've talked about and the available parking spaces.
Yeah, so there's a lot of.
Yeah, but we're going to leave it to you guys to figure out that math, all right?
But is there anything, you know, that you guys want to provide an idea uh, about the parking, if there is any limitation to the parking? Yes, we talked about the greens.
No.
We'll definitely. If there is any limitation to the parking, yes, we talked about the green space, we'll definitely, you know, put that, you know, the walkability and the green space, but in terms of parking, if there is anything, you know, that we need to consider before we finalize the usage, I would welcome that, so we can refine the plans.
Yeah, well, let me say and then give an opportunity to other members of the board to object or whatever. I think what we're looking for is something that is an efficient and attractive balance between, you know, green space and appropriate parking to to the use, you know, I mean, so I think that's that's what we're saying and you know, as you proceed forward in your proposal to have the proposal address that balance would be very helpful to us and I'll stop and ask if the rest of the board agrees with that.
Yeah, and the only thing I think I would probably add to that is put a lot of thought into the flow of the traffic. I know the flow across the street at the gas station sometimes isn't great. I think it maybe got a little bit better once the hotel came online and so just think about the flow, think about how especially that middle entrance, how cars are exiting and entering off of River Road, especially at your busy times.
So, yeah, I mean, mostly the banquet hall stuff is on the weekends. Friday, Saturday are the premium days and Sunday is slow. Sunday morning is busy, but afternoon is slow. So and then we are talking about evening times. Most of the parties are a lot of this in the evening time, so.
On the weekends.
On the weekends, yeah.
So that definitely helps you not worry about worried about the commuters from the apartments and, right?
Gotcha.
But but, yeah, just, you know, if you could pay attention to that, that's definitely a helpful explanation, but as part of your formal presentation, I guess. That's something.
Addressing that issue.
Yeah.
Yeah. Fortunately, it's right off the highway, so it's very accessible that way for you.
Yep, definitely. So it's a very good location, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just looking at, so Chris, remind me, we didn't write any special parking requirements for River Bridge that superseded the parking for the general bylaw, did we?
In in section four fifty, our village overlay district, it calls for a minimum of two point five spaces per thousand for retail and commercial. That's kind of a low minimum.
It is low.
Compared compared to many other communities, but that was because the planning board wanted to encourage on the low side of parking.
Right.
Also, that same bylaw section on parking gives the planning board great flexibility in looking at parking and circulation and and green space and and shade trees. So, you know, like other overlay zones, this one has a lot of flexibility. And as you know, we don't, we don't go through special permitting, we go through site plan review only. And I've explained to Earfend that in Berlin, that's done as part of a public hearing. So it 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 has the formalities of a special permit process, but it it is just site plan review and and the board has a great deal of flexibility.
It sounds to me like the bylaw minimums are not going to be relevant. What we're going to be balancing is the commercial needs versus the green space. That those are the really determinative factors as we go forward.
Yeah, exactly. Yep.
Yeah, cuz I I mean, I was looking at our general regs in terms of parking, so places of public assembly, the venue with four hundred accommodated a parking space for each three seats, which, you know, that's a hundred and thirty parking spaces essentially. And then the restaurants that we've got is a space for a hundred square feet, but you're not talking about restaurants that are seating people. And lots of times seems as though you look at the seating capacity when you're thinking about.
And don't they, don't they overlay provisions preempt those anyway?
They do, but I was just.
I understand that they're interesting as a benchmark, absolutely, but.
Trying to figure out whether we're very far off. I don't think we are. I think and and as we've realized, parking is we've, we wanted to go on the low side because we've overcompensated in some places in the past.
That's that's why I was asking that question because what you were looking at is a comparison, I think, dates to back to a point when we were maybe overestimating parking. But, yeah.
That's right.
Anyway, okay, so we know the benchmark to variance for the zoning bylaw, which is obviously a higher hurdle than anything than noodling over the provisions of a site plan review. It's probably not going to be a factor because you're going to want more than that as a matter of commercial efficiency. So let's look at what you have in terms of commercial efficiency and what you can do in terms of the concerns that we had in terms of sort of green space and integrity and integration of this parcel with the other uses. Fair enough?
Yes.
Yeah, and and one of the things that I think we've reflected on with the gas station is loading and unloading and delivery and I think it it's probably necessary for you to outline as best you can how you'd accommodate deliveries. Because I I, to me, that's been a problem at the at the gas station. I mean, they end up parking that in in parking spaces and that just reduces the capacity, so.
That's a good point because there'll be more deliveries and so on with these uses than there is with the gas station, certainly. Yeah.
Trash removal as well.
Yeah, that, yes. Delivery said that that was the word I was searching for, removals. Yeah.
And and I mean, we also snow storage. And and, you know, where are the dumpsters gonna be located and all of that kind of the the no fun stuff about developing a plan.
Yeah. I think what we're saying is, I mean, this thing seems to have legs in terms of the high-level presentation and we've indicated to you the concerns that we need to address in the next step.
Yep.
Just so you know, the other owners at River Bridge are very well aware of this proposal. And every month, the River Bridge Association, Inc., which I am still the president of, even though I have tried to step down, I give an update on what's happening with us, nine D and E.
It was a stolen election.
I've been doing this for twelve years now. And we have professional management now and it's it's really working very well. But I want you to know that the hotel and the apartments and the fellow who just bought the gas station, the daycare center are very much aware of Earfend's proposal and that we signed a contract. And there's a ninety-day due diligence period, which Earfend is just about twenty days into. And so this, if this works, you know, Earfend knows this will be three months and five or six visits in front of your board. But it's possible that if if Earfend chooses to go forward at the end of the due diligence period and the board is comfortable with what's being proposed, that Earfend could become our new member at River Bridge by the end of the year.
That's great.
Good.
And my condolences that you can't invoke the Twenty Second Amendment, Chris.
We should have put term limits in.
Yeah, no, I think that, I think that sounds fine. To be a very productive discussion. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, everyone, you know.
All righty.
All right.
Thank you for your time.
Thanks.
Is that the last of our agenda items? I think it is.
Well, I think.
The letter.
Yeah, the 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 letter. I was okay with those changes that I think I indicated in in an email. So I think, I think we're we're ready to go and have it executed. That's right. Tim, you've been in more in contact with the people who are
Yeah, so.
handling the document.
At at first, I sent around Heather's changes, which seemed simple, and then I sent around the the new draft from the mall folks. Which was more, I mean, they they left specifics and they just changed what they considered to be the tone, which they thought would sell better with the prospective tenants.
I didn't have an objection to their changes. It didn't seem to me to be substantive.
No, I mean, I they they just wanted to make sure that no one got scared away, I guess. But they, again, when I talked to Liz the other day, she said they're encouraged, they they don't seem to be attracting bottom feeders. These are people with legitimate proposals and, you know, looks good to them, so. Good. Remind very well. They asked if anybody had gotten in touch with the planning board and I said, I didn't believe anybody that was looking at the site had talked to
No.
the board at all, so.
No, which makes it that much more important. We get this thing in place so that we So at this point, is it the selectmen are gonna sign it?
Well, I said to Meredith, who do you want it sent to? And who do you want it from? Is there a benefit of having the select board and the planning board both sign it, the chair of each?
I
I would imagine.
Yeah, I think that's fine, yeah.
I mean, that's what I, I guess that would be my pitch and then I'll, I can check with Meredith again and just say, who do you want this to go to? Do you want it to be city council? Do you want it to be the mayor? Do you want, you know, who?
And and who's gonna counter sign for them?
Yeah.
Okay, if you don't mind doing that.
I'll do that.
And then, you know, we can be in contact. I can make any changes to the document or review anything that they do in terms of the execution and we can get it done.
Yeah, they, I was just, I was gonna look at it again and see if Heather's change was to add ordinance. One of her changes anyway, to just.
That was it. I mean, it was twice ordinance because I had said the city's bylaw, but it's their zoning ordinance. That's fine.
Yeah, and I thought, I, we need to make sure that the new language that the mall folks put together includes ordinance, I guess, so. I can check that, but I'll I'll reach out to.
No, I think, I think, I don't think you need to do that. I think she was correct. Then in the city, it's called a zoning ordinance and in town, it's called a bylaw. And when I was drafting it, having always represented a town, I missed that distinction. Yeah, exactly, exactly. There's that, there's no, no, no problem with that change.
Good.
And and as far as the changes suggested by Marlborough, again, I thought that they were not substantive.
Yeah.
And I, again, I think it's very important if they're getting down to it with people that we get this in place, cuz this seems to be, since nobody's contacting uh contacting us directly, the way that we get a seat at the table.
Yeah.
Right.
Good. All right. I'll reach out to her.
All right.
Awesome.
Well, if there's nothing else, and seeing as I have to be in Boston at six thirty tomorrow morning, may I make the the big motion to adjourn and I'm going to suspend that if anybody has anything else they wanna say, but.
Second.
Motion's made in second and it's non-debatable.
Then we're done.
I'll ask you to vote. Gotta gotta be official. Carol McDonald.
Aye.
Thomas Andrew.
Aye.
Timothy Wheeler.
Aye.
And Tom Sanford, aye.